Eternal God, our Father, would come again to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you're doing in our city. Thank you for all the hands and thank you for the feet that are moving around. Lord, we thank you for our police and our fire, continue to keep them safe, continue to cover our students and our teachers in our city. And, Lord, we ask that you continue to cover each and every resident in Jesus' name, amen.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Here.
I don't see him.
He needs to see you.
I need to see you. Councilman, I need to see you.
I'm here.
He needs to see you.
There he is.
There he is, okay.
Let's be delayed.
Up top.
That's just a picture. Emerson.
Here.
Raycos.
Here.
Warpo.
Here, let the record show, nine present, eight in chamber, one by Zoom. Mayor?
Hi, nice to see you all. Before I get into my activity log, and I know we're going to talk about ordinance that's being proposed today, I want to start off and talk about an eventful moment that happened a week ago, actually, a rain event, a flood event that we had on August 17th, August 18th. So I want to start off, if you don't mind, and address that. They call it historic rainfall event, and it's a rare monsoon-like event, that's what it says about it, but I don't really think that's accurate anymore. It seems like every year or two, we're always talking about storms that are storms of the century. But between last week, late Sunday night, and Tuesday, between that period of time, Hammond saw between six and eight inches of rain, Robertsdale took the heaviest hit without a doubt. Also complicating the matters, as you all know, the Hammond Sanitary District for decades has been accepting water from multiple customers that surround Hammond. This storm blanketed our entire service territory. Like, every single customer we had, as well as the city Hammond and Robertsdale, were taking a major hit from the storm at the same time. At the peak, our wastewater treatment plant was moving 160 million gallons a day. That's almost three times its design limit of 68 million gallons. The Columbia Avenue retention basin filled completely and discharged over 100 million gallons of partially-treated water into the Grand Calumet River. 100 million gallons into the tank and into the Grand Calumet River, which is a CSO, we have to report that to the state. Had we not had that tank, you know, that was built probably close to eight years ago at this point, six to eight years ago, had we not had that, that's another 100 million gallons that would have ended up on the streets or in our basements. So thankfully, we had that, but it's still a CSO event that we have to report to the U.S. EPA, that we have to report to IDAM. That's water that would have been in our basements before we built that basin. Even after the storm, flows stayed high, over 70 million gallons per day until yesterday. It's now down to 55 million. So until yesterday, a week later, six days later, we finally got flows less than our plant capacity. Our plant is rated for about 70 million gallons, and we finally got down below 70 million gallons yesterday, catching up from this rain event. For comparison, a normal August day, we would treat around 30 million. So we're still twice as high as we were from that rain event. We received around 200 reports of basement backups across the city, about half of them in Robertsdale. They were spread out, other than the Robertsdale cluster, they were spread out equally across the city. Every pump station we have was running at maximum capacity during a storm. We were fully manned at all times during a storm as well. This was a high-volume event that pushed our system beyond its normal limits. I want to thank our Hammond Sanitary District crews who kept operations running around the clock. I want to say how truly sorry I am to the hundreds of families whose homes suffered damage from this terrible storm. My apology is not because the Hammond Sanitary District failed. Our team worked tirelessly and did everything possible to prevent damage, to attempt to prevent damage. We did nothing wrong. I'm saying sorry because I feel personally for the people who lost so much. I personally know the heartbreak. Years ago, I lost my own basement to flooding as well, and at that time, I made the decision not to invest in furnishing my basement nicely anymore. I know that every home and every family situation is unique, and not everybody has that luxury. But this is the reality. These storms aren't going away. In fact, it seems like every year, between mid-August and early October, we face more of these monsoon-like rains. That's why it's so important for all of us, as Hammond homeowners, to do what we can to prepare our homes for the possibility of flooding. I promise you this, the city Hammond will continue doing everything in its power to protect our neighborhoods, but I also encourage each resident to take steps to safeguard your own property because these storms are becoming part of our new normal. We're in this together, and you have my word that I'll keep fighting for solutions to protect Hammond families. I don't know if you have any questions. I didn't get into the rest of my report. It would be not right to start off a council meeting and not address.
Councilman Kowinski.
Hi, Councilman.
Mayor, I want to thank you for those words.
Thank you, Councilman.
I know that Robertsdale suffered, other parts of the city did, I know in North Hammond, in my neighborhood.
Yes, sir.
When lights, back door, back porch lights turn on around 10:00 p.m. in a rain, I know that people are bailing, and there was a lot of that around me, and so a lot of losses. Thank you for the pickups on Saturday and Sunday in the alleys, that was helpful.
I know. It's also sobering to see everybody's personal belongings sitting out in front of their house.
To see what happens. Alleys are the way to go.
Yes, sir.
And I was thinking that, you know, if the data center does happen, that 4 million in a pilot program per year, what a thing that could be if it went toward check valves for all the houses that still need one in Hammond. Because that's a lot cheaper to handle it that way than anything the Sanitary District has to do, as in build more basins or another plant, just a thought.
Thank you.
Thank you for your empathy. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Councilman.
Mayor, mine's more of a comment than a question. But 2020, I remember you and I were over by Dowling Park. Water was pouring into your truck. My Jeep had it knee-deep in mine. But every time one of these events come up, I start getting calls. Why don't Hammond open the gates? Why don't Hammond open the gates? It's real simple, there are no gates. Whoever started that rumor that there's these gates that city employees have to magically open, they don't exist. It's a gravity flow system, and the pumps that they turn on help pump that water to the plant quicker. And as many times as we say it, every time there's a storm, we hear the same things over and over again, open them gates. And I'll say it one more time, there are no gates to open.
Thank you, Councilman. It's a fully automated system. We did everything, like I said, we did everything we could, and, you know, it doesn't make me feel any better because, as Councilman indicated, I drove around and looked at people's front yards, that's no fun. Being the mayor and seeing that is no fun. It's, you know, so anyway, I appreciate everybody's thoughts. Any more questions on that?
I have a question. Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I have an observation that I'd like to agree with you on, Mayor, and that's the wave of the future, that we're going to get more and more of these storms, and it's just the fact of our life.
Yes, sir. And going back to Councilman Mark's idea, if the data center happens and we have that kind of flexibility, I think it's a great option to talk about, Councilman, okay? Because let's be honest, while we're talking about it, I don't, we don't go to homes with the check valves in their basement very often. We don't, I mean, because the check valves allow water to flow into the system, it doesn't allow it to back up. So if every home in Hammond had that check valve in their basement, presumably, we'd have no basement backups. But it's hard to get the homeowners to invest because it's a few thousand dollars upfront, okay? I'll be honest, my home doesn't even have one, and I flooded. So I'm perfect example, all right? So I'm really sorry. I don't think these storms are going to get any less intense, especially during this time of year. I think it's incumbent upon all of us, when you see that, when it's hitting us hard all at once like that, that's when we're in trouble. If we get breaks, we can catch up. We got no break. Over 36 hours, we got it all at once. That's the worst kind of storm you can get. So to the Hammond residents that suffered damage, I'm terribly sorry. So, and all of us are. I know the Hammond Sanitary District worked two days straight, and we still flooded 200 basements, so. Anyway, I'm going to go ahead and cover real quickly my activity log, and I know we have a busy council meeting. So I attended the inaugural meeting of the Northwest Indiana Professional Sports Development Committee on behalf of the city Hammond. I want to congratulate State Rep. Earl Harris for legislative accomplishment that you don't see Democrats do very often. He put this committee together. It's basically all the cities and towns from Northwest Indiana as far out to South Bend. Actually, no, it's only out to Porter County, excuse me, LaPorte County. But our next meeting is actually in South Bend, talking to the South Bend Cubs, so, about what they're doing. It's pretty interesting. Hopefully, something develops from it. But that was just the first meeting, so I imagine it's going to be a while. Attended a press conference to recognize six of the Hammond Marina's lifeguards for their heroic actions, literally saved a woman from drowning. So we recognized the following lifeguards, I'm going to mention their name because we're at the council meeting, Georgiana Manojovic, Gabriela Gomez, Trevor Bembry, Julissa Gomez, Matthew Maciel, and Grace Mulcrone, the lifeguard supervisor. Thank you very much to those six lifeguards for being unseen and preventing the tragic loss of a swimmer. Attended a town hall with Indiana Lieutenant Governor Micah Beckwith and Griffith, just staying in the loop as to what's occurring downstate. And as you all know, there's a lot occurring downstate that affects us, so I heard the Lieutenant Governor was in town, I made sure to get over there. Attended a dinner with the Lake County, Indiana mayors, One Region, and the LCEA about regional growth and economic activities. Attended a promotion ceremony for five officers in the Hammond Police Department. The following five officers were promoted. Rob Taylor was promoted from sergeant to master sergeant. Evan Holland was promoted from sergeant to master sergeant. Ron Rogers was promoted from sergeant to master sergeant. Mike Chikatelli was promoted from sergeant to master sergeant, and Rob Trost was promoted from sergeant to lieutenant. Met with developers, potential developers, on property in Hammond's Hesville neighborhood. Met with Councilwoman Janet Vines. Had breakfast with Councilwoman Scott Raycos. Had a meeting with Hesville business owner who wants to create a mural outside of her business on Kennedy Avenue. Phone interview with Northwest Indiana Business Magazine, and peered on WJVO morning show with Jed to discuss recent flood events. If you don't have any questions, I know we're going to be talking about the ordinance proposed, I'll save my comments for that. Hi, Councilman.
I just wanted to react to some follow-up that you initiated after the last meeting.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the follow-up you did on the West Point industrial complex.
I have a great chief of staff, he's literally taking notes right now, firing off questions, so thank you, Scott.
And...
I would love to take credit myself, that would be not accurate.
I'm grateful that the administration did follow-up.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And the other follow-up was on the hotel at the car wash on Boulevard by the Walmart in Robertsdale.
Yeah, I drove by it the other day. It's not looking great.
And thank you for the response.
Right. They're behind on their financing, but, you know, I remember when Nash, he did a couple hotels for us on the south side of our city. He was slow on those, but you can't argue, once he gets them built, they're beautiful, so I apologize. I know it's frustrating, and it looks crummy, I acknowledge, so.
I appreciate the follow-up.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you all, good to see you.
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Hey, Mayor.
Hi, Councilman.
I just had a quick question. I know your office has been trying to coordinate with NIPSCO about some of the streetlights outages that we have across the city. Is there any update or any information you could provide us about that?
We actually, Councilman, thank you for the question. We found it easier to approach NIPSCO with the bulk of lights that were out. We approached them with literally over 100 lights across city Hammond, and it took a couple, but NIPSCO did all of the lights eventually, over the course of like two or three weeks over the summer. I imagine we're probably, if we have more of the wooden poles, that's for the Hammond residents that are listening, NIPSCO lights are the wooden poles. If you have wooden pole lights that are out, the best thing you could do is either go through your councilperson or call them into the mayor's office, we keep a list. And instead of approaching NIPSCO with one pole at a time, we approach them with dozens and dozens of poles at a time, and it seems to work better that way. So if that works for you, Councilman, you can just call Alex in my office, and we can get him on a list for you.
Okay, yeah, I think, yeah, that's who I talked to before, so I knew you guys were working on it, just didn't know if there was an update or like any information about what was causing it, because it did seem like there were dozens of blocks that had streetlights out.
Recently, Councilman?
Yeah, I think I just, the last time I talked to Alex was maybe a week and a half ago.
Okay, that's a problem then, Councilman, because the lights we, I was talking about, were knocked off well over a month ago, so we need to probably start a new list.
Got it, okay.
Okay.
Okay, I can follow up back up with her and see if there's any updates there.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm happy to add to that list.
Please.
There are about eight poles in the park, Plasky Park, that the lights are out.
Please call, could you call them in? Could you call them into my office?
I'll have to take a walk there.
Or either that, or maybe, Scott, we could follow it up also, or we could send Alex out there. But if you see in your district or at-larges, Alex in my office is constituent services, that's, she coordinated the first batch of lights with NIPSCO, and it worked well. So if you can get them to Alex in my office, that's directly to the source, so.
I'd just like to add that when you said about the wooden poles.
Yes, sir.
That when people call me, I always ask them, take a picture of the number on the pole that's on that football-looking badge, that's the easiest way I can get them to the engineering department.
You could do it in Hammond 311, too, Councilman. Even NIPSCO poles.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, so if it's wooden or metal, in Hammond 311, so. Thank you, guys.
Anybody else? Thank you. Item number four, approval of minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the August 11, 2025 meeting, and place them on file.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Item five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims dated August 6, 2025, and ending with claims dated August 20, 2025, claim number 7295 through claim number 7741 inclusive, in the amount I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Raycos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick-Roch.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications? Does anybody have any communications? I have one. I noticed today that the Citizens Police Academy, which I attended and flunked out of. Baseball got in the way for my grandson, though. But it begins Monday, September 15, and I think runs through November 8. Am I correct on that, Mr. Thomas?
I believe so, yes.
I made it through all but two classes because baseball got in the way, and they were the two best classes because we were supposed to go on a road trip and then to a shooting range, so.
You missed the road trip?
Yes.
Oh, boy.
But I've been told I can take it again, which I probably will. But I recommend that anybody that's interested in what the Hammond Police Department does, take that class. It's very informative and... The people in my class seem to like my jokes, so I'll go back, okay? Does anybody else have any communications? Hearing none, communications are closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Sorry, the Capitol Improvement Board did not meet last week, so there is no report.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I will be bringing out ordinance number 2516 for final passage, and I would also like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, September 3, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Hesville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 18, 6:00 p.m. at the HC3 Community Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Tuesday, September 9, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School. South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet, is that Thursday, Lori?
Thursday.
Okay, Thursday, September 18, 6:30 p.m. at Trinity Lutheran Church on 173rd and Holman. Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 11, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. And as usual, I urge everyone to attend a crime watch meeting. This month at Edison Community Watch, we're going to have, our guest speaker will be our new code enforcement commissioner, Mr. Bill Luder. And so if you have any questions about code enforcement, please come out, ask them, he will be more than happy to answer any of your questions. Because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Also, under committee reports, council as a whole will be bringing out ordinance 2516. Is there any other committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are closed. Item number nine, ordinance third reading and final passage.
Ordinance number 2516 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance creating new funds number 3394, 3395, 3396, 4682 for Series 2025 YMCA bond monies for the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2516.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, at the request of our controller, this ordinance is to establish three line items for the YMCA bond funding. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, Clerk Golick-Roch.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Raycos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinance for final passage.
Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 25-17, sponsored by Councilman Kalwinski, and ordinance of the common council of the city of Hammond to regulate the use of golf carts on public property in a specific area in the city of Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I move for 2517 to pass through first and second reading. We refer to council as a whole on September 8, 2025, at 5:00 p.m. I so move.
Is there a second? Motion's been made by Councilman Kalwinski, seconded by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I'd like to acknowledge all the first responders that have come here today to make it clear what their stand and position is on this ordinance. I also appreciate the residents who are in support of this ordinance being here today and taking a stand on that issue as well. That's what good government is, being able to go back and forth about something and try to find the best resolution to that issue. So thank you for being here. I'll step back and let the mayor go now, and I'll come back. Thank you.
Mayor.
Hi, Councilman. I appreciate Councilman Mark's remarks, and I agree that it's good to have a good debate, so. Councilman, and Councilman Mark in his defense told me this may come up a couple months ago, and I gave my mark at the time, my honest, my honest feelings on this issue. It was, he said, hey, I was thinking about floating this ordinance for golf carts in Robertsdale, Mayor, what do you think about it? And I honestly said, Mark, I don't think it's safe. And that was even without even giving much thought, I just was like, I don't think that's safe. And I get it, I get it, Whiting's got golf carts, I get it that there's other communities around the region that are doing this type of thing, but I also know that in Whiting, you could operate a golf cart and stay away from Indianapolis Boulevard and literally not have to cross that major highway with semis and fast-moving cars. I'm afraid just, if this passes, I'm afraid somebody's going to get killed in a golf cart, and we're all going to be looking at each other and wondering why we did this. I don't even think, saying it's, it might happen, I think that's inaccurate. It will happen. People are going to get hit by a semi or get hit by a high-moving car, and they're going to get killed in a golf cart, and it's going to be on us to feel good about it. I won't feel good about this, I'm telling you straight up. This is dangerous, in my opinion, it's flat out. I hear the argument, well, we're Robertsdale, we're just like Whiting. No, you're not. This is the city of Hammond, you're part of the city of Hammond. There's not a mayor worth his salt that would sit here and say, oh, part of my city gets little special rules that the other people don't get. If this passes, it's got to pass citywide, and that's a disaster. I'm not going to sign anything that says Robertsdale's special, they get special rules, I'm not going to sign that. I would get laughed out of this place if I came in here and told you Knickerbocker Parkway is a special place that I think we should have golf carts. I would get laughed out of this freaking city hall if I did that. This is insane. I will not sign this, I will veto it if you pass it. And, and if you pass it over my veto, I don't know what the heck I'm going to do. But that's, the people in the back are the ones that are going to have to do the job, let's be honest. This ordinance says code enforcement can do it? What are we going to do the first time somebody in code enforcement gets punched in the face for pulling over a golf cart? Are they going to have to start wearing body cams also? So let's be honest, code enforcement's not going to do this job, it's going to be all these guys back there. You guys get to chase the bad guys, you guys get to protect our homes and chase a couple golf carts now and then. No, no, no. This is not going to be supported by me. This is unwise, and it's dangerous. I stand fully, firmly opposed to it. And I appreciate the Councilman for bringing it up, he's being a gentleman about it, I acknowledge. He went to the police department last Friday, talked to the police chiefs, I appreciate that. So I was just going to stop there, unless anybody has questions.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I appreciate your passion.
Thank you, sir.
A couple things. One is that the Whiting residents with their golf carts can cross the Boulevard at 120th and at 121st, because one side of 121st is Whiting.
Gotcha.
So that's, that's done. A couple other things from caucus that I want to address is, one, golf carts are not considered off-road vehicles, they're considered slow-moving vehicles. And I inquired with some of the golf cart operators and owners before the meeting, and they do have insurance. They have homeowners and auto insurance on their golf cart and on, and they have liability. So those are just issues I wanted to clear up. And let me just say this, when I singled out Robertsdale, it's because I was asked to bring it forward, because there's a connection between Whiting and Robertsdale. Secondly, I can appreciate the concern over safety.
Thank you.
My hope was that by starting, by taking a small bite of the apple, we could maybe pilot something that Hammond designs regarding safety and the use of golf carts in a larger city, and if that went well, to then move it along to other districts. So there was nothing special about that, there was just the rise of the quest for nothing special about that. There was just the rise of the quest for having golf carts being used. So a bite of the apple, a bite of the elephant, however you wanna see it, seemed to make sense. If that was a problem for people, I apologize. It wasn't meant to be. It was meant to make it manageable and doable, figure out the problems, problem solve it, move forward. And that's all that was.
Councilman, can I respond?
Right.
I, I understand. I get it. I understand there's a connection between Whiting and Robertsdale. I do, okay? But those are two different cities. I mean, we all know that, right? But I, sometimes, you know, I live closer to Highland and Munster. That doesn't mean that the laws of Highland and Munster apply to me because I'm close to the border, right? I mean, we still live in Hammond. I don't think there's a mayor worth his salt that would feel good about that situation because to me, I'm citywide, just like the three out large Councilmen. And I believe in uniformity, I do. So I think that this is something, if it's gonna pass, that it should apply to the whole city. And I don't think that's wise at all personally. So.
I think we're seeing good government here right now.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the back and forth.
Thank you, sir.
I'm hoping that this can pass. I'm very optimistic and I know how this will go.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Councilman. I'm glad that we're being civil about it too because that's how you should do it. And sometimes it doesn't work out that way. So.
And I know that there are golf cart owners in the audience who have brought petitions and primarily from the 46394 zip code, 60-plus signatures. And I know that people who are buying these $600,000 and $700,000 homes are hoping this ordinance can pass because it does appeal to them. And yet I know that safety's first.
Thank you.
And that we all have to look at all sides.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vinesz.
I think we all need to be mindful that we as a unit represent the entire City of Hammond, not just one neighborhood, the entire city. And I don't believe that we should single out a single neighborhood to legislate on. It's for the city or not? There's no mention made in this ordinance that the vehicle must be factory manufactured. Some, something tells me that somebody's gonna rig something up and they're gonna get a VIN number from somewhere and they're gonna take it to the police department. I just, there's, there's just no mention of that made in the ordinance. It's my opinion that the state-required limits of liability on a vehicle of this nature are woefully insufficient. For Indiana, if I'm not mistaken, it's 2550 for bodily injury and $10,000 for property damage. It certainly would not cover if there were an accident. Nowhere on the application does it require proof of liability insurance. It only asks for the name of the company. Where's the proof? I wanna see the limits of liability. I, I also believe it's unfair to burden our Hammond Police Department with the inspection of these vehicles. They have more important things to do. We always talk at our Crime Watch meetings that we are supposed to be the eyes and ears of our police department so they can do their job, so we can sleep at night knowing that they're there to protect us, not checking out some golf cart. We are not a gated community. I, I just, I, I know of people who live in gated communities and, and they have problems with the golf carts in their community. I don't know what makes us think that Hammond would be any different. Now let's talk about some of the drivers that go through our city, whether they be from Hammond, whether they're driving through. Stop signs, stoplights are considered optional. Yellow lights, that means floor it. And we all know, we all know that that happens. Our bike lanes that are there for recreational purposes, people consider those to be passing lanes. I've experienced that down Holman Avenue multiple times. As I stated before, we are not a gated community. However, we do, we do have some neighborhoods that I think golf carts could possibly work. And I would be willing to consider golf carts in a neighborhood if the district council people would gate in their neighborhood. I don't think they're going to be spending money that could be better utilized on streets, on gates for their community so people can utilize golf carts. Now, you know, maybe 50 years ago, golf carts may have worked in Hammond because we had, in a small radius of blocks, we had a grocery store, we had a pharmacy, we had a neighborhood tavern. Golf carts may have worked back then, but Hammond has changed dramatically and for the better. I just, I think this, this ordinance is very irresponsible for the safety of our residents as a whole. And I am a firm no on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
Just playing an advocate for a moment for Councilman Kowinski. In terms of if there were some other information, you know, a lot of times we bring these things to the table so we can have these discussions to be able to either fine-tune or anything like that, from my understanding. If there was something that maybe PD thought can go in there that could possibly help this situation out, in terms of, I heard Mayor about, he wants to pass something. If it's gonna pass for a whole city, I hear Councilwoman Vinesz about gated communities and things like that. Just looking at, from a different standpoint of, if there was a way for it to pass, what could that be that would allow it to pass from our PD standpoint and things like that? So that's all I'm asking, as we continue to dive deep into this.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your thoughts on that. If this were to pass through first and second reading and go to committee, I'm open to as many committee meetings as necessary to problem-solve and hear all sides. And I'm not looking to pass this in two weeks. It would be down the line after everybody was comfortable, should that go to committee. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'll reiterate what I said in caucus, that I don't wanna be misunderstood. My insurance agent that is on Indianapolis Boulevard is an independent insurance agent. And when I called him and asked him about this ordinance, my particular company, Travelers, considers it an off-road vehicle and they don't provide liability coverage for golf carts on city streets. That doesn't mean that there aren't other companies. He did tell me when he searched the eight he deals with, he found three that do insure it for liability. But then that begs the next question, is that the same liability coverage that you have to have to drive a car? So with that, and the, and talking to the Hammond Police Department and listening to their concerns, and even the fire chief, and the fact that I'm not comfortable passing anything for one section of the city, I can't support this. Anybody else?
Can we call for the vote at this point?
Sure. The motion's been made and seconded for council as a whole on August 8th at 5 o'clock.
September 8.
I'm sorry, September 8. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Clerk Golick roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
No.
Vinesz.
No.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
No.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Ricles.
No.
Warpo.
No. What was that, five, six to three?
Six to three.
The motion fails six to three. Moving on, resolutions. There are none. New and unfinished business. Does anybody have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's let him leave. Councilman Salinas.
I'd like to make a motion that this council approve a proclamation that I had our attorney Berger put together to honor Bishop Joseph Alfred Senior. Should've been copies in everyone's mailbox regarding pastor, longtime pastor at Bethel Church on Michigan in Calumet, has been elevated from pastor to bishop. And I'd like to pass, put together this proclamation.
Is there a second on the proclamation?
Second.
Second's been, the motion's been made by Councilman Salinas, seconded by Councilwoman Vinesz. Under discussion, you would?
Under discussion here, I wanna say that Bishop Alfred has faithfully served Bethel Church of God in Christ with steadfast leadership, spiritual guidance, and a heart devoted to the service of God and community. Through his many years of ministry, Bishop Alfred has uplifted countless individuals and families, offering hope, encouragement, and faith to the people of Hammond and beyond. His promotion to the sacred office of bishop is a recognition not only to his devotion to the gospel, but also to his unwavering dedication to shepherding his congregation, strengthening the body of Christ, and serving the greater community with humility and distinction. Bishop Alfred's ministry extends beyond the walls of his church, and he has worked diligently to promote unity, inspire service, and exemplify the values of compassion, justice, and faith, and strengthen the City of Hammond. City of Hammond takes great pride in honoring the achievements of its faithful leaders who contribute to the spiritual and cultural fabric of our community.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I ask that a correction be made on this. Barry's name is spelled wrong, so before it's signed or anything like that, that it gets corrected. And then possibly putting everybody's, putting my editing hat on, putting everybody's name in the same type of, is it gonna be all capitalized or is it gonna be capital lettered in irregular? So just making sure those little things are changed.
So are we signing this one? Okay. So once it's revised, does anybody else have any further discussion? Any further Hearing none. Clerk Golick roll call on the motion.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vinesz.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Ricles.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries, nine in favor, zero opposed. And for the weird looks I got on, once it's revised, there's three names that are in all capitals and the others are not. So.
And then Janet's name.
We'll correct that and then get, we'll get it right and then we'll get it signed.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else got anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. Public expression, you have three minutes. First one is John Lavasko.
Gone.
Gone. Laurie Zuno.
Good evening. Lorizano, 7142 Forest. I want to thank you for voting against the proposed golf court, golf cart ordinance. I was opposed for a number of reasons, one of which is why Robertsdale? Why not my neighborhood? Let me just say, thank you, no, I don't want him in my neighborhood. What's good for one is good for all. Hammond is not a sleepy beach community. We are the largest city in Lake County. We have enough traffic and problems without this, without asking our officers to do more, to chase down golf carts, for goodness sake. But while I'm on a roll, this ordinance, which was published, I have a copy here, that's something I don't see very often. And I want to express that I'm opposed to the council pushing through an ordinance on the first and second reading at one council meeting. I'm also opposed to you using the expression, first and second reading. The ordinances are never read aloud. We don't know what they say. This ordinance was, I don't know, four pages long, maybe? Really interesting. We don't see them till after they're passed and they're put online. I would urge you to only motion for things on a first reading, wait another council meeting, and then a second reading. That's designed so the citizens have time to look things over, so you have times to discuss amongst yourself, make changes. I feel like a first and second reading at one council meeting is forcing things through without giving the residents an opportunity to really know what's going on. Additionally, I, again, your motion says first and second reading. Then read them aloud. Read the whole thing. That is very, very time-consuming. My better suggestion would be that they be published where the agendas are published online, directly after the agendas, as proposed ordinances. And then anybody who was interested in seeing them could find them, read them, and have some educated discussion with you about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Casimir Zach.
Good evening, Council.
You got three minutes and you're in the honor system.
I've got nothing about golf carts. I just wanted to let everybody know that as of September 9th, 6:00 PM at Jefferson Elementary, we will be having our first official Crime Watch meeting, re-establishing that meeting in the Jefferson area. It's open to anybody that lives in that jurisdiction, I guess you could say, for Jefferson Elementary. I know that's changed recently. You can find that on, the school City of Hammond website shows exactly who's covered by the Jefferson School. It's been confirmed with the school. We're good to use that. And it's been confirmed with the police department. So hopefully get a decent crowd out there for that meeting on September 9th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time.
6:00 PM.
True story, Robertsdale. I wish to thank Laurie for brilliant words, brilliant words. Wish I would've said it myself. This thing about the golf carts is utterly nothing more than indulgence. Special interest legislation, which is the bane of good government, especially democratic governments. Now, we're gonna separate, this guy's gonna get a little bit of this, this guy's gonna get a little bit of that. Next thing you know, we got a Don Trump situation. Whatever he wants, oh, I feel like this today. Let's have special interest legislation. And as for insurance, who cares how much liability insurance is gonna attach to the golf cart owners? They're the ones that are gonna get mauled. It's gonna be us drivers that are gonna pay the bulk. to get mauled. It's going to be us drivers that are going to pay the bulk and have a new, new standard in our, in our pool of insurance. That's what's going to go up, because it's going to become more hazardous to drive in Robertsdale. It's insane that golf cart drivers are going to have liability for what? Putting a dent in your fender? Really? I don't know what you guys are thinking sometimes, but that's just nothing but abuse. And, and it's, you also have to remember, Robertsdale has a lot of senior citizens, and it's an older crowd, so to speak. You know, that's just, that just bumps the risk even more. I can see the actuaries already crunching the numbers now, probably after Warple's call, going to work, and doing a demographic, and then crunching, crunching the actuaries. It's just, it's just more exposure. I just don't understand the whole, the whole point, yeah, they bought some expensive homes, so what? Will they, we're all over and play dead? I don't think so. I don't think so. And what's more, if you're going to insure the, irrespective of who's insured, whether it's the golf cart owner or the motorists, there still has to be an attribution of fault. Fault is still going to be determined. So, there's no, there's no special dispensation or consideration going to be extended toward anybody. Now, we're just going to, now we're going to have to watch out for guys going 25, 30 miles an hour. They're, they're, they're not as balanced as an automobile. A good gust of wind coming off Lake, well, Lake or something can blow them all over. And, you know, comparing it to Whiting, Whiting compared to, to Hammond is virtually a hamlet. You've got these nice, tight neighborhoods with big trees over covering the streets. It's really nice. You've got 119th Street, and that's about it. You've got a small portion of, of Indianapolis Boulevard, you know, from, what, about 119th Street, further south to the bridge as you get into Chicago. That's it. But that's, that's hot dogging. You get to go 45 miles an hour on that. I like that. We go slow enough in this town as it is, anyway. So, now we're going to have to go slow just so, just so the guys in, in the new homes in Robertsdale can, you know, drive their little golf carts? I wonder if there's a homeowners association that is running that show over there. Maybe they should, like, like Councilwoman Vanez says, get your homeowners association, block yourselves in, fortify yourselves like some old medieval fort, and just go to town in their little go-karts. You know, it's just insane. You know, the, the liability risks are just off the charts, and then this idea of, well, they're going to be insured, you know, it's a comedy.
For the record, that was three minutes and 45 seconds.
Thank you.
Can you repeat that part where you mentioned me, because I wasn't paying attention? Next speaker, Gary.
Okay. So, anyway, the golf cart issue, okay? And mostly you do, no, I do have one, and I do use it, okay? And Dave, and I talked to you, under ADA regulations, it is a mobility device for me, okay? And I'm allowed to use it. Now, I try to use it on sidewalks. Unfortunately, City of Hammond, a lot of the sidewalks, people block them with cars, their driveways in it, they let bushes overgrow and all that, so I'll drive it on the street. So, you know, I have no problem. But I'm, I think if restrictions were placed, I think they'd be fine. I also have one in Florida, and we do have the neighborhood watch signs, a lot of us do. So, we do use it for watching the neighborhoods, you know, for security and everything, too. I'm unincorporated, I'm not in a private community or anything like that in Florida. It's unincorporated Lee County. So, I do like my golf cart. I absolutely love driving it. I used mine today to go to Burger King. I crossed 169th. I do it at one exit from one of the store, strip malls, going across to Burger King. Okay? So, I do use it. It's my mobility device. So, and that's ADA. And just like a service dog, Sylvester is my service dog. Nobody can question that by law. Not, nobody, I mean, a vet or anybody. It's the determination, you can train your service dog yourself by law, and it goes the HEPA laws to protect it. The only thing it asks, if it's a service dog, if he's, doesn't have to have a vest on, he doesn't have to be identified, they can ask, is it a service dog? If he answers yes, they can ask the task reforms. That is it by law. So, I mean, I just want to give my two cents in some of this, and that's it. As far as the street light goes, hopefully, they're going, I worked with somebody from our crime watch meeting that is a retired NIPSCO guy, and he's working on getting them fixed, too, because ours has been out for four, five months. So, just let you know that.
Hey, when Sylvester's on that golf cart, there's no window for him to stick his head out and hold his tongue out, so what does he do?
He's off to the side. I hold it on to him, on me sometime. Sometimes we go slow, you know, you got to use common sense with it. You know, there's a lot of common sense you got to do, and I know a lot of people don't, some people do nutty things.
Thank you.
So, anyway, thank you.
Mary Shones. I think I got it right.
Hi, thank you for your time. I, I'm at 3945 Wabash. A request, please, when you are, when you're speaking, some of you I can hear very well, and some of you I cannot hear at all, because you talk very quietly, and you don't talk into the mic. Please remember to talk into the mic, and please talk clearly so we can hear you. Thank you. The definition of greenwashing is the act or practice of making a product, policy, activity, et cetera, appear to be more environmentally friendly or less environmentally damaging than it really is. That's from the Merriam-Webster's dictionary. And I bring that up because on August 10th, there was a city-sponsored Lorax lunch, talking about planting trees in Hammond, which I am in favor of. When some of us from, say, Briar East Woods wanted to come to the Lorax lunch, we were greeted with a line of police officers at the Hammond Sportsplex. For no other crime than to let people know what was happening in their own neighborhood, because if we let people know that we wanted to cut down 20 acres, or we're going to cut down Old Growth Forest in Hammond, then maybe people would lose their appetite. Nowhere in the Lorax does it have our main character cheer on the act of cutting down Old Growth Forest in order to build a condo development sponsored by the city. And I'm really glad that the mayor brought up the flooding. Yes, you're right. Flooding is here, catastrophic flooding is here, and it's here to stay. If we cut down Old Growth Forest, it's going to make our flooding much worse, and none of you should have passed it. None of you should support the cutting down of Old Growth Forest, especially when there are quicker, easier solutions at hand. Okay? I mean, you're right, it is going to get worse, and it's still not too late to, to, to save these, to save these woods and to save this flood mitigation from, okay? And I want to thank you for your time.
And for the record, Lorax is the cat in the hat, right?
Lorax, the Lorax is a character from, it's Dr. Seuss. Yeah.
Cat in the Hat?
No, Cat in the Hat is a different character. The Lorax is a character who speaks for the trees.
Do we have any other speakers?
No more speakers.
I make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, signal by five by saying aye.